Good morning and welcome to the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman McGee, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Hey, Father. Our most gracious Father, we first of all come this morning thanking you for this day, and we thank you for these who have gathered here today. We thank you for this council. We praise you, bless us with wise decisions that we make for our city. And we thank you for our staff. We thank you for our police department and our fire department that protects us on a daily basis. Father, we ask you, please, to give us grace and your mercy as we go through this day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before we start, I would like to recognize the student council from Owens Elementary that are with us today. Can y'all stand? We recognize you. We hope you get to see good government at work. So glad you're here. All right, we've got the minutes from October the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Nguyen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z one, Kyle.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This first item is a request for a PCD planned commercial district final site plan. This is for the Bellwood property on the West Loop. This is approximately fifty-three acres of land, as you can see here, just generally between Earl Campbell Parkway and Robertson Road on the West Loop three, Loop three twenty-three. The purpose of the site plan is to establish the layout for this first part, this first phase of the development. Overall, the entire PCD, as you can see going west, is approximately five hundred and forty-three acres, and that was rezoned back in two thousand and eight. This is the first phase of that. Generally, the surrounding land uses are commercial in nature. And let's go to the site plan here. That does show the layout for retail space as well as restaurant uses in that area, and some multifamily, multifamily development just on the north side there between, or north of Robertson Road, where there will be an extension of Whiteside Road on the west side. The site plan does, again, does show the extension of Robertson Road going west into the property, as well as a minor extension of Earl Campbell Parkway on the southwest side there. That extension is consistent with the overall plan for Bellwood Park. The, again, when we staff review the application, we did receive a traffic impact analysis, or TIA, and the site plan does incorporate the feedback or some of the recommendations from that TIA, TIA to address, you know, the traffic impact from this development. Of the notices that were sent out for this request, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the proposed site plan, and the plan and zoning commission by a six-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? One thing I would like to ask, just for clarification.
Yes.
Earl Campbell on the south side, this, this plat, this, this, the subject of this has nothing to do with the extension of Earl Campbell going through the property. It stops right where you see on the plat.
Right. The, where it's shown down here on the lower, lower left side of the site plan, that is still in alignment with the, the concept plan that was approved in two thousand and eight. So that's not changing, that's not changing the alignment going west of that.
Okay. You have any questions for Kyle before I?
Just one quick question. Kyle, looking at the plat, it appears they'll have three additional curb cuts onto the loop. You'll have the light at Earl Campbell, the light at Robertson, and then three other ingress egresses off the loop, only for a right turn out.
The, so there, there are three driveways on the loops out between Earl Campbell and Robertson, and those, they have deceleration lanes to accommodate the movement off of the highway. The, there's only one median opening on the loop right there, it's right in the middle. The, the other ones would be effectively right in, right out, because there's no other median openings. But that one in the middle's not, at this time, shown to be right in or right out.
But none on the north side of Robertson, which is going to be with a residential?
Right. Yes. Yeah, no driveways on the north side. They will access Robertson Road or Whiteside Road.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle? I've got three cards here. Chris Anderson, would you wish to speak? Come on up. If you can state your name and address for the record.
I'm Chris Anderson. I'm with Provident Realty Advisors. We're the, we're the owners of the property there and the applicants for this, and we're, our office is at ten two ten North Central Expressway in Dallas. I'm just simply here in case you had questions that you wanted myself or Stuart Fink, who's also here from my office, to answer for y'all.
Okay. Y'all have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Okay, thank you. I also got a card from Stuart, who's here to answer questions, and a card from Mark Priestner, who's here to answer questions, but Mark evidently wants to come up.
Thank you. Mark Priestner, half associate, it's eleven twenty-one East Southeast Loop. I just want to point out a couple of things to answer your question, too. There's a backer road that, that connects all the way, so the lights will be connected. So the, the idea and the layout is to drive everybody up to the traffic lights at Robertson and down to Earl Campbell Parkway. This is the first part of the five hundred acre tract. As we move west, it's going to become more urban and more residential in nature as it gets back. And, and so what we're trying to do with this one is just set up what is the primary commercial, make sure we have access coming out and through, good cross-access everywhere, so we've got, we're spreading out our traffic. So like, like Kyle said, we did a TIA, which, which ended up, we added multiple dual-left turn lanes and things like that to help with not only the traffic shown in this phase of it, but when it's ultimately built out. So we're looking far ahead and making sure that this is something that's going to be beneficial to the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark? You know, I'll say this, we've worked with, with Provident on this for well over a year, and, gosh, it's good to see this plat, and good to see the activity on the West Loop. And I really do, I hope it is contagious and really catches on and creates a whole new development on the West Loop. You know, the South Loop and South Tyler takes care of itself, and I'm just, I'm ecstatic to see this happening. So thank you, Provident. Thank you, Mark, for what you're doing. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Approved, Z one.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Z two.
Okay, so I'd like to introduce our senior planner, Terrani Krishna Kumar, to present
Good morning, Mayor and Council, and good morning to everyone present here today. This is a zone change request from R two, two family residential district to R one B, single-family residential district. This is a property that's located northeast of the intersection of Glenwood Boulevard and Kennedy Avenue. The applicant is requesting the zone change to build a single-family, additional single-family home on their property. All the surrounding zonings are mostly residential, and it's developed with single-family homes, and also there's a church and a school administration building to the west. Looking at the future land use guide, this is consistent with the request. It identifies the property as single-family, medium-low density. That's the aerial view of the property, and that's going to be the proposed layout. They're going to change from horizontal, from vertical to horizontal, so they can have an additional single-family home to the south of the property. And the access will also be limited only to Kennedy, and so there will be no access to Glenwood Boulevard. Out of the seventeen notices that were sent, one was received in favor and none in opposition to the request, and planning a zoning commission by a six-zero votes recommend approval of the zone change.
Any questions for Terrani? Move to approve, Z two.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, Steve.
This ordinance is the result of an ongoing review of the Tyler City Code. It's got several objectives: to streamline procedures, increase efficiency, remove unnecessary or confusing language, improve service to the public, reflect current city practice, and also ensure compliance with applicable law, especially our city charter. These amendments are primarily related to our city board provisions, most of which are found in City Code, Chapter one. As y'all are aware, the City Code contains residency requirements for all of our city boards. Right now, the wording is that the council, there is an overall provision that allows the council to appoint members to city boards that are not residents of the city Tyler. This is a little different from the past practice, which used to be that there's a general rule and then exceptions to that general rule found in the individual City Code sections. So what this amendment does is return us to the previous process. So what that means is all city board members, as a general rule, must be residents of the city of Tyler. The council certainly has the discretion to allow any person, not a city resident, to serve on a board, but that would be done by adopting a specific ordinance for that city board. A good example of that is our construction board of adjustment and appeals. We had issues in the past about getting total membership for that, so that's a board that allows for people who live in Smith County, but this will return us to the normal residency requirement. Also, this, this change will not affect the current term of any person serving on any city board at this time. The next change is to City Code, Section one dash twenty-one. As written, it currently mandates the city manager to conduct a periodic review of city boards. And that is, that wording is a little bit unnecessary, because that is essentially done every year when the recommendations are brought to the council. So what this provision amendment does is, rather than making that review mandatory, it makes it discretionary with the city manager, who will continue to bring any board membership issues to the board, to the city council as needed. Another change to City Code, Section one, is to the Main Street Board. I want to talk a little bit about this one. The, the reason this change is being brought to the city council, as currently written, the code provides that the Tyler Main Street Board has final authority on approving recipients of the downtown revitalization grant. That was included when the ordinance creating the board was first amended. This provision is in possible conflict with the city's appropriations process, which is a procedure required by law where the council actually has to appropriate funds. So as written, this City Code provision is giving a city board final authority over funds that really the city council should exercise. So the only change that this provision makes, there are actually two of them. One is it removes the final authority of the Main Street Board on grant recipients. That authority to make recommendations, specific recommendations, remains with the board, but it will ultimately be with the discretion of the city council where it really belongs. And this will ensure that we don't run afoul of our city budget appropriation process where the council makes financial decisions. Since this change is being made, we're also amending the definition of city officer. By, by removing the final authority of the Main Street Board in this instance, the board is no longer more than advisory, it becomes an advisory board in total, and that means the definition will not include the Main Street Board. So the city ethics ordinance itself will not apply anymore, but the state law on abstention and people not participating in the actual discussion, that will still remain. A couple more changes. City Codes, Chapter eight and nine, both contain provisions, one related to the Parks Board, one to the Library Board, where the boards have, the, the way the wording is currently written, it suggests that these boards have an actual role in the city's budget process, which is not the case. So we're taking that confusing and incorrect wording out. We're changing it back to the original wording, which is either board may make any recommendations regarding adequate funding to the council, but we're removing the participation in the budget process wording, because that actually is counter to our current city practice. It also is in potential conflict with our city charter. So this is a cleanup change to address that. The final change is to the Animal Care Advisory Board. At present, this board has nine members. However, Smith County and Tyler Junior College now have their own operations with regard to animal care. So the recommendation is to change the current total membership from nine to seven members. We're removing Smith County and Tyler Junior College. Both have not participated with the board in a long time, so this will reflect current city practice. The only other change to this provision is we have state law requirements, including that a veterinarian must be on that Animal Care Advisory Board. We've had some issues in finding someone to serve in that capacity who's a city resident. So this will be one of those instances where the code is being amended, if the city council approves, that the veterinarian serving on this board may be a resident of Smith County if a person residing in the city cannot be located. So these are the main changes to the city boards. They're mainly, mainly cleanup changes, and it's recommended that the city council adopt this ordinance, amending and updating Tyler City Code, Chapters one, eight, nine, and fourteen, to the city boards. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
So when we make the, this passes, we make the exceptions for citizens of the county as opposed to just the city to be on the board. Would we be doing that during the board appointments?
Yes.
And it would be for that person?
Yes, or for that, for that board position.
Yeah.
When it comes up, that you'd want to have citizen, city citizens in there versus people who are not citizens of Tyler.
And it would require an actual separate ordinance if the ordinance does not already provide for it. The, the international codes already have a provision about the construction board having Smith County residents, so that would not be amended. And then this changed today on the veterinarian. But if at any time the council wishes to amend any individual City Code provision, you have that discretion. It would just require another ordinance to create an actual exception to the general residency.
Does it change the ordinance for the board or for that person to be on the board?
It's for the board.
How would that process work if we're taking under consideration the board appointments in August? Would we table that item or table that board to then discuss an amendment to the ordinance and come back at a later meeting for appointments to the board?
If there's an indication where there are some applicants and the council does wish to consider, as soon as we know that, we could draft an ordinance that would be ready for you at the same time.
Any other questions for Steve?
Please do approve of one.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, we got M one. Darren's antsy.
I know, I was thinking, this is going to be Jose's moment to shine.
Good morning, Jose.
If Jose and Darren had worked out a deal, Jose was like, look, you'll take this my item, I'll take yours.
It's opposite day.
Exactly.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
My name is Jose Padega, Parks Manager. On October nineteen and October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, the city of Tyler opened bid for the PT Call Park renovation project. A pre-bid was held on October twenty-six at two P M. There were three bidders that submitted bids. Paragon Construction was the lowest bid. It is recommended that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number twenty-three dash zero one one for the PT Call parking, park renovation to Paragon Construction to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor in an amount not to exceed five hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Any questions for Jose? Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jose, how many years you been with the city?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. I tell you, every time I see you, you're always smiling, and you're, you're, you have, it seem like you really love your job. And I tell you, it's just a pleasure to be around you, and I hope you're here for many, many more years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
It's an honor to be here.
Well, thank you. Good job. All right, Darren, M two.
You can tell I'm anxious.
Yes. Hope it's good.
Chris, get to M three.
All right, I'm up here to request the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a capital improvement project, construction contract with Fritcher Construction for the South Thompson Avenue and Barger Street paving and drainage improvements project for one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in no sands, bid number twenty-two dash oh five oh. What I would like to do, it just, because many of you are aware of the project and all the issues we've had, you can see on your screen, there are two holes in the, in the street. The first one is about two or three, several years old on the left. On the right is just from a few weeks ago. So we have developed another hole in the street, so we, that is blocked off. What the issue is, and the problem, is we have some failed storm sewer pipe that has caused a lot of the sandy soil under there, all the sand just to wash away, basically, and just create voids under the street. Unlike other city streets or brick streets, there are, there's only sand underneath it. There's not any concrete or any other type of asphalt or base material or anything underneath. It's just sand underneath there, so it is washing out considerably. So what we want to do for the solution is remove, replace all the brick paving with asphalt paving. We were, we will salvage all the brick and use it to replace and, and repair other streets for the street department. We're going to replace all the water lines and water services, replace all the sewer lines and the sewer services in coordination with the consent tree and power water utilities, replace all the storm sewer pipes, obviously. That's what the main purpose of this is, replace the curb and gutter that we need to. And we are also installing and replacing sidewalks, so we have a continuous route all the way from Mulberry all the way up to Irwin. This is an overall location of the project. It does go from Irwin down to Mulberry and from, on Barger, from Beckham all the way over to Thompson. We contracted with Brandon Corporation in May of this year, and they were able to get on the project quickly and get this out and get construction plans finished. We did open bids on October twenty-fifth. We had four bidders that were on the approved contractors list. The bids range anywhere from a little over one point three million to about one point, little over one point seven million. They were grouped, two around the one point three million, about one point three one and one point four one million, and then two of them, they were grouped together, actually around the one point seven to one point eight million. So in other words, the bids validate each other, in other words. So we didn't, we'd just get a bid, one low bid and the rest high. We just wanted to verify that and acknowledge that. So we were excited about that. Half-Cent Board did approve this yesterday unanimously at their meeting. And just to let you know, the engineer's bid was one point two nine ninety, and so he did a very good job on his estimate, which we always like to see. In conclusion, I would like to recommend the city council of the city of Tyler authorize the city manager to execute a capital improvement project, construction contract with Fritcher Construction Services for the South Thompson Avenue and Barger Street and paving and drainage improvements project for one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, bid number twenty-two dash oh five oh.
Any questions for Darren?
Yeah, Darren, do we have any idea what the cause of the failure of the storm drainage system was? The pipe material.
The what?
It's, it's a pipe material. It just wasn't meant to serve this long. The storm sewer pipe material.
How do you think that clay pipe was, was, or is, I suppose?
I would imagine it's over fifty years old. Brick streets are best over that, but.
Yeah. Any other questions for Darren?
Move to approve, M two.
Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M three. Thanks, Darren. M three, Cameron.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the city. So today, this is an engineering contract for the design of a traffic signal at West MLK and West Gentry. This is an existing traffic signal that we are replacing. So just to give you the location, in case you're not familiar with it, here on the map, up near the zoo area on Gentry and MLK is that existing traffic signal. And so here are a couple of existing pictures. Based on the best information I have at this time, this one was probably put in around nineteen sixty-eight, so it's probably fifty-four years old. And looking at the age of that structure, that's probably pretty accurate. Design life for typical traffic signals are twenty to twenty-five years, and so this is well past its design life. During some of our preventive maintenance, we identified concerns with rust holes that are in that existing mast arm. You can kind of see that in the picture on your right. And so just the need to go ahead and let's get this one replaced. The, the design will include the new signal structures, conduit, wiring, cabinet, and also pedestrian ramps and pedestrian signals and crosswalks at this intersection that doesn't have it today. Also, it'll include some structural analysis, because you're looking at probably six months of design and then another year of, you know, to get things constructed. So we want to go out there and look at this structure today. Is there anything temporary that we can do to make sure that if we get any high winds or something, that it doesn't fall, just because of that condition? So there's a little bit of extra work that we want to make sure that it will withstand until we get it replaced. Also, just want to kind of make a note, you know, given the age of this, is we actually have, hopefully this year, we have on our half-cent plan to come back to you with a contract to do an inventory. with a contract to do an inventory of all our traffic signal structures to get a good age of what they are and the condition, so we can kind of put together a priority list and be more proactive in getting these replaced. We have actually, you know, through our Highway Safety Improvement Program, working with Tech dot, we actually have three signals on Gentry Corridor that are scheduled to get reconstructed, and that's funded through that program. So, we're starting to see, looking at other options, but this is a case that we need to go ahead and get this done and move forward. So, with that, it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with Kimley Horn and Associates for the West Gentry Parkway and West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard traffic signal design in the amount of $66,900.
Any questions for Cameron?
Cameron, you said you're going out today to take a look at that issue that you just showed us, the danger.
So, we will, we have Kimley Horn, they have structural engineers on their staff that will do that analysis. And so, once we execute the contract, we're actually looking to get them out early December to have them look at that and give us any recommendations on what we should do.
Okay, thanks.
Cam, you, you said it's got to go through designer. Those, those are not standard items? Are those all designed and custom fabricated?
The traffic signal poles are not custom designed, so those are standard poles. But just doing a survey, actual laying out the locations so that you avoid utility conflict. So, that is the PS and E development of the plans.
Okay.
But not the actual signal structure.
Got you.
Make a motion that we approve M3.
All right, we have a motion by McKeller.
Wow, it's loud. Second?
Second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. By the way, you look very dapper. Regina?
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Regina Moss, Director of Organizational Development. I'm here today to speak to you about item N4, and that is an agreement with public sector personnel consultants to do a compensation and classification plan study for the city. We are hoping to conduct a very broad study with a generalized purpose. First off, it would be an organization-wide study, and that would give us an opportunity to take a look at where we are on all of our pay and classification. Really, it's an opportunity to gain information so that we can develop an updated compensation and classification plan. The last full study that the city did for city pay and compensation was initiated in December 2008. So, it's been quite some time, and it's time for us to take a look and find out where we are to do an update. The goals of this study are to ensure that we have external competitiveness. So, we want to make sure that we're paying our employees at a rate that's competitive on the external market, and also that we have internal equities. Also, one goal is to make sure that we have ongoing and maintenance update strategies so that our pay and compensation plan can be looked at periodically on a regular interval to ensure that it's up to date and that we are at market or wherever we want to be in order to make sure that our employees are compensated for their value and in a competitive manner. Doing this will ensure that we have an advance for hiring and retention, and it works directly towards the city's strategic plan goal of building and maintaining a talented workforce. The scope of the plan. The study will be broad, so what we're gonna do, one of the, one of the items that will be looked at is to review our current practices as related to our internal and external competitiveness. We'll take a look at our job descriptions, and we'll take a look at our position classifications. After that's done, recommendations related to title modification and reclassifications will be made by the consultant. And I'll say that we started this process about a year ago. Early 2022, we began updating all job descriptions with staff. So, I want to just really thank them and commend the effort that every single employee has done to look at their job description, put a good eye towards it, and amend it to reflect what their current role is and what they're doing. And that's crucial to this process, so that rather than just shooting into a compensation study, we have current information to work with, so that we're not going out to market with stale information. We don't get stale pay rates back. So, I just wanted to thank all the department leaders and the employees for all the hard work they did in updating those job descriptions over the past several months. They put up with me in trainings, and everyone submitted their updated job descriptions, and that's going to be tremendously helpful as we go out to market. By going out to market, we'll be able to determine the value of each of our positions within the city and then do that competitive market analysis, allowing us to do benchmarking, benchmarking, and collect market data. We're not only going to look at base salaries, but we'll also look at ad pay, certification pay, and assignment pay. These are all part of our compensation structure, and it's important to know where you are and how that's being managed in order to maintain an updated structure. Once we are, have done all that, we'll be able to calculate prevailing benchmark rates. Next, we would develop a salary range and structure that's updated that, the big part of that is it simplified, simplifies our pay grades and our classification structure, and it'll also build in plans for career progression. And by that, I mean career ladders or step programs. When you simplify that plan, build in career ladders that gives your hiring managers more flexibility at when and where to bring people into the compensation structure. So, rather than looking at your pay grade and saying that you'll bring someone in at minimum, you look at that pay grade, you look at the person, and it gives you flexibility to bring them in at a, at a rate that's suited for their experience, their knowledge, and what they're bringing to the organization. So, we're offering, we're trying to, to get more flexibility there. And the very last portion of the study would be to actually develop a recommended implementation strategy for, strategy for an updated classification and plan. Again, one thing that we'll need to do is take a look at where we are and then identify our philosophy for where we want to be. So, we want to figure out where the city wants to compensate its employees in relation to the market. So, this, having this information updated will give us an opportunity to create that philosophy and strategy in a manner that's current with our current beliefs and values for our employees. The report and the study will also include fiscal impact estimates, so we can know how this would affect the budget if prevailing rates were, were implemented. We will develop procedures for placing new positions in that comp and classification plan if they're created, and also, again, an ongoing plan for maintenance and update of our comp structure, so that we're not falling behind and we keep up to date with market. Outcomes and implementation. The biggest thing that we need to point out is that the study is not intended to result in an immediate across-the-board increase for all employees. That is not what a compensation and pay plan study is designed to do. That type of move is really intended to happen through the budgetary and strategic planning process. So, I'm not here to ask you for that. But what I am here to ask you for is to allow us to do a study to acquire current market data so that we can make informed decisions about our future compensation strategies and our pay structure. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you.
I also wanted to point out that sometimes you go out to market and you find that some of your positions are at market. Every, they're, everything is fine. So, you might go out with several positions and find out that you're, you're doing just fine. That is not uncommon. So, it really is doing a housekeeping, keeping, finding out where you are so that you can appropriately plan for the future.
So, what if you're paying them over market? I'm just kidding. Keep going.
That, that, that could be a possibility. And if you do, again, you have to figure out how that fits into your philosophy, philosophy, because you could adopt a philosophy that certain position, the value that they bring to the organization is that you want to pay them over market in order to retain them. So, that could be a goal and a philosophy component. So, again, information and assessment. We would be expecting a final report that includes multiple recommendations for multiple options for implementation. So, an updated comp and pay structure with recommendations for implementation that could be single-year, multi-year, or phased, depending on what we find. Again, we don't know how to plan, we don't know how we move forward unless we know what the data says currently. The estimated time to complete the study is four to five months, and that is because, again, the staff did a lot of the hard work in updating those job descriptions over the past several months. A little about the partner that we have put forth in this agreement is public sector personnel consultants. They are unique in that they work exclusively, exclusively with public sector employers, and they have several current or recent projects with many cities in Texas, including many of our benchmark cities. In fact, they have been working on a longstanding relationship with Longview and have done a lot with them to develop their comp and pay structure, which we have looked at over the years as we've worked with ours. And with that, I'd recommend that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with public sector personnel consultants to conduct a classification and compensation study in an amount not to exceed $85,000. And I will let you know that at $200,000 has already been approved in the FY 2223 budget, so we are well under the appropriated amount.
Right. Any questions for Regina?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to say to Attorney Regina that your presentation was outstanding. It was amazing. I understood everything. I have no questions because it was clear as a bell. Thank you so much for the amazing presentation.
Thank you.
Regina, you said we last looked at this in 2008. And so, after we do this, we'll have the guidelines for the future. It will lay the groundwork so that we won't have to go back to this in-depth of a study.
Yes, so ideally, once you've completed a full organization-wide study, your plan has a process for looking at segmented groups of your workforce. So, you find out what's there, and then you just, you can divide your workforce and have a series of interval looks, so you're not looking at everyone at the same time. So, it's, you would roll different segments of the workforce to have a study conducted with the idea being a living compensation and pay, pay structure that's updated regularly.
Any other questions for Regina?
I just have a comment also, too. You know, we talk all the time about properly serving our constituents by running the city as a business. And so, this is truly a case where we're, we're walking the walk and not just talking the talk. And so, I want to applaud staff and the city manager for bringing this to council because it truly allows us to develop our, our team, allows us, hopefully, a skilled team and, and also a tenured team long range. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve M4.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll say one more thing, Regina. In, in my six years on council and two years as mayor, I can't remember a time where we've had better staff. And I'm not discounting what we've had in the past. But it, we, we just, we, we have good staff, and I think it's what Bob was saying is, is we want people to be compensated fairly. You know, and, and when you started the, the program, the Bring Your Baby to Work program, which is totally beside the, the fact, but it's still, it's about employer retention, and it's about employees enjoy coming to work. And when I see the employees that we have, it, it, it is a happy place to come, and people like coming to work from what I can see. But, but thank you for, for what you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Kedrick, M5.
Mayor and Council, we have item M5 before you. M5 is a request that City Council consider authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for professional audit services with Prothrow Wilhelm P. LLC to perform the fiscal year 2021, 2022 annual audit for a total combined fee, including all out-of-pocket expenses not to exceed $119,200. As you all know, we have an annual, this is an annual process. We bring the letter of engagement to y'all each year to conduct our annual audit. Annual audits are important, you know, the, our, our bondholders, our citizens, they all have access to our financial information to be able to see how, how well we're performing financially. And so, those have to be audited by audit professionals, and Prothrow Wilhelm is that company. And what I would like to note, this actual fee is a little bit higher than what we had originally had in our initial RFP. And the reason for that is we receive cares and funding and ARPA funding from the federal government, and the auditors are having to do some additional work. So, this fee is about $18,000 greater than what was initially proposed. Also, there's greater inflation that wasn't, than what was anticipated in the initial RFP. So, the interim audit work has already begun, August 22nd. So, with that, our recommendation is that we request City Council to consider authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for professional audit services with Prothrow Wilhelm P. LLC to perform fiscal year 2021, 22 annual audit for a total combined maximum fee, including all out-of-pocket expenses not to exceed $119,200.
Any questions for Kedrick?
Please approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kedrick.
Thank you.
Before we take action on the consent agenda, we do have one card for CA5. Bob Ruhr, you want to come up and speak?
Order of order, Mr. Mayor. Should we pull C5 off the consent agenda and discuss it?
I move that we pull C5 on the consent agenda.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And for our students in the audience, what I will be speaking about is the first sentence of U.S. law and what's on the backside of the $2 bill, the Declaration of Independence. And what I gave you all each a card of is the platform of the Republican Party, the first 10 items, and most of those relate to a Bible verse. So, those are things that, to which you swore. So, anyway, considering what has taken place in the last two and a half years and what is likely to happen in the near and distant future, I must object to continued funding for net health. My reasons for opposing more funding are more than net health's past performance. My reasons are more fundamental. My reasons are because we, the people of Tyler, this body, and the bodies you appoint and fund are egregiously ignorant of the principles that must be protected by the oath that you and many in this audience have sworn. These principles are found in the first sentence of the first book of the law library in the courthouse. The two laws in the first sentence are those that no human laws should be suffered to contradict. What are the laws that should never be contradicted? They are creation, or the laws of nature, or the Bible, the laws of nature's God. Unfortunately, the City of Tyler, Smith County, the state of Texas, the United States, and the world have suffered and will suffer much, much more because we, the people, our clergy, our elected bodies, have failed to enforce this very first sentence of the entirety of U.S. law. You as lesser magistrates, in order to abide the oath you swore, must interpose when the principles protected by the oath you swore are violated. It can be argued that this one sentence and the principles contained within it are the sole reason the United States was founded. If not for the faith of our founders and their creator and their Bible, the first sentence of U.S. law, how else could a ragtag colonial militia defeat the most dominant military ever on earth? It, is it the utter ignorance of, and disregard for this one sentence, that Tyler citizens have suffered and will continue to suffer the loss of their liberty, their health, education, jobs, homes, businesses, and even their lives? These losses will certainly increase if the people of Tyler remain ignorant of the pre- by the oath to which they swore. It is for the above reasons that I must object to continued funding of the net health.
Thank you, Bob. All right, we're going to take action on CA1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we've got CA5 that we're addressing right now. Thinking that we need to make a motion to either approve or disapprove CA5 before we consider the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, we will back up and we'll take motion, take action on CA5. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve CA5.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we will vote or take action on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, CA1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Council, a few items of note. The first meeting is regarding kind of a meeting that the Mayor Warren and city staff had with Texas Department of Transportation to review the plans and issues related to the improvements for South Broadway from south of FM 2813 or to South Town Drive. And so Tech Dot has reduced their scope of the project. They've looked at several different things, as y'all can, as y'all know, just during the past decade or more of different types of options of how to handle the amount of traffic that is going on down on South Broadway. And so they've really tried to probably take the most practical aspects with some of their planning now. And so with that, the construction estimate that they've put together is about 26.2 million and is planned for letting in late 2028. So it kind of puts in perspective of when we might start to see that happening. There's a separate project, actually, that Tech Dot will be moving forward with that's just south of Loop 49 to, as far as to help with traffic access on US 69 at FM 2813 Marsh Farm Road where there's been different accidents, and that's planned for actually early 2023. So you'll start to see that project kind of start to move forward. And so the meeting also discussed access connections for Irish Meadows Neighborhood and some addition deletion of median breaks to help move traffic and reduce accident points along South Broadway. So that'll be something that as they move forward with their planning, you'll start to actually, and your constituents, probably in the next year or so, to have as part of involvement and looking at and comment, period. Another issue in regards to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, then our most recent TCEQ invest compliance, comprehensive compliance investigation in August of this year, TCEQ raised a notice of violation for failure to test or plug wells that were not in use. The city has multiple, as far as just water wells that are kind of placed throughout the city that were designed back in kind of the early days. And so these haven't been in use in years, and due to the rising operational and rehab cost, we looked at to see whether or not, whether it was the benefit of having these wells, of putting them in operation, or going ahead and plugging them. The cost to rehab and operate each well greatly outweighs the benefit of having these wells in operation. Each well's production capabilities and gallons per minute, average of 360 to 1,000 gallons per minute, is also minimal when compared to the production capabilities that we now have for each of the water treatment plants, which are in excess of 20,000 gallons per minute. Rising operation and rehab costs, increased regulations, and minimal benefits have also caused us to evaluate whether diverting resources to the rehab of the wells in order to have them placed back in service is still a feasible option. And so the Texas Tyler Water Utilities has made the difficult decision, which is when they were looking through this, to go ahead and move with, forward with the plugging of the wells at this point because of the fact that if the situation was that the wells were needed, the amount of time for putting them in operation and also their capacity would not reach what we are needed, are needing for to provide our customers. And since the wells are no longer serve the citizens like they once did, they will begin moving forward with the TCEQ regulation compliance. And from a budgetary and regulatory compliance standpoint, we're seeing this plan be the best use of our resources and allow for us to focus on meeting the needs of a growing city for years to come. And then finally, a couple of different items of note. The Parks Department was selected to receive a $20,000 grant from the National Environmental Education Foundation for handicap accessibility equipment at Pollard Park, which is scheduled for renovation in the upcoming year. And then Keep Tyler Beautiful is also selected to receive $13,000 in funding from EdCog to pay for their paint recycles collection day in 2023. The funding will allow professional services to properly collect, handle, and probably discard and recycle the paint collected on that day. So we're looking forward to those different options to, opportunities to use those grant funds.
Any questions, comments for the city manager?
Ed, can you explain a little bit more on the proposed, I guess, ideas that Tech Dot has for the South Broadway, South Town area?
The primary piece that they're looking at is in relationship to involving dual left turn lanes at northbound Market Square Boulevard, Parks Everest Road. Another spot will be southbound on Centennial Parkway, and then also dual left-linked turn lanes for northbound and southbound at Cumberland Road. As they look at it, they see as far as the stacking that's happening for the turns as they try to manage those in order to be able to kind of provide then the through traffic to be able to continue. The other piece is then, especially when you think of it Cumberland, that's where the third lane ends, especially ahead of south on Broadway. And so the, as far as taking that, adding that third lane then all the way down, I couldn't remember if it went past Loop 49, it may have, but to add additional capacity in that spot and location. Thank you.
We could. Before we adjourn, this is totally off script. Alisa, can you come up here? Yeah, Alisa Patrick. Come on up here. Come on. Come on. Ed, can you let her up here?
Oh, up here? Oh, sure.
All right, Alisa, what we're going to do is I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, if you don't mind, I'd like to say congratulations to all the members of city staff who served in the United States Armed Forces and to say Happy Veterans Day to them and salute them for their great work. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. You're going to hit this in just a second. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. We are adjourned. Yay.
Mayor, do you want to recognize the kids that are here so that...
Yeah, okay, y'all stand up again. Y'all stand up again. So we're going to have a little lunch now that we're adjourned and, and visit with y'all and answer all kinds of questions. So we are so glad y'all are here. Okay, let's go have fun.